I'll just get to it in there.
Yeah, I'm just not sure if anyone else is coming. I was confused because I got an invite and it got canceled and then it says it's hybrid and I'm just like, okay, what's going on?
Yeah, I'm in the right spot because I just started the meeting.
Okay.
But I don't know if anyone else is.
It's not always other company.
Oh, Christina, I'm on the agenda.
Oh, I'm Will.
Hi, Will.
The one that sends you the meeting minutes who they write them off.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm not sure why there's no signal. Not that this matters because no one was recorded.
Yeah, exactly.
It just happens to do a hybrid.
Yeah. But yeah, so that has to be related to it.
Yeah.
That's fine.
But I imagine.
I thought so, yeah. Yeah. No one said they weren't going to be, you know, it wasn't like, oh, we're just gonna be home.
Hi.
Hi.
This is Senator Joe Comino.
It is.
I'm working around seven o'clock.
No, we haven't. I know.
Joe, may I just use me? I have to get dressed.
No, I'm sorry.
I can't. Oh, Christina, I do the agenda as a minute, so I send out the mails and this is me.
Nice to meet you, Martha.
Yeah.
We will set up the hybrid. It's recording.
Okay.
Not, not video, we're just audio.
So I'll try not to speak.
Okay.
All right. If someone comes on, you hear them out of that.
That's how it's supposed to work. Oh, okay. Someone needs to turn this yellow on.
How are you doing?
Well, yourself?
Yes.
There you go.
Okay, so I was on now.
Yeah.
And get together to feel like we still belong. Need to be at the other one. And keep the closest family relationship close, which is tough for us because we have four kids. Went to Providence. That's not so bad.
That's not far.
In New York State, upstate near Poughkeepsie, got near New Pauls.
Mm-hmm.
The two little girls.
Mm-hmm.
Went to Kentucky, the two teenagers.
Teenagers.
And the other one is in real doctor. With one on the road. So quite a distance.
Mm-hmm.
I visit the post office once a week at least for all kinds of junk, I think. You know, just mail, just so the kids get some mail.
Yeah.
You know, very old fashioned.
Yeah.
Let me FaceTime when we can and stuff like that.
13. Is that the one it's supposed to be?
They all came for Christmas.
Oh, nice.
And we'll see them now in the summer.
Justin told me how to do this.
How about you, Lisa? Imagine.
I have four of my own, but they're still with me.
Well, that's a lovely life we have.
Yes.
This is different world, isn't it?
Yes.
Absolutely, a different world.
Yeah.
So how old are they all?
My oldest is a junior high school, so he's getting his license next month probably.
My oldest grandson. I think he had, he's in that, you know, that graduated voice from Kentucky.
He's on the internet.
He's six and one last year.
Mm-hmm.
That's a boy or a girl?
Yes, boy. Yeah, three boys and one girl. And then my youngest, he's seven, he's getting.
Well, that's mine and mine is apart.
Yeah?
Yeah.
They keep me running around.
So three boys, are they doing sports any of them?
Yeah, they all do, they all do soccer for sure. Both for the town.
Do you have regular soccer for the boys?
I'm actually still the president of that group right now.
I think it was on this thing right here.
What things happened at the games when our kids were doing soccer.
I'm not sure.
Just the parents list and the bottle of water and the oranges and stuff like that.
Yeah, for the little kids, they do that.
I know.
Oh.
Because I know it's true, you know. Because of COVID.
Does Justin come?
We used to.
She's not in yet. She said she'll be here any minute. She's essential sending down.
Set up.
So.
Of rotating lists.
Yeah.
And they would bring in every week one parent would make something, maybe drinks or a snack of some sort.
Uh-huh.
But through COVID, we're not allowed.
Set TV and put HDMI two.
You don't have a spring season.
Yes, we do.
So it's still long to do that.
We still have the, we still have the spring season.
But not the.
We all do that.
Yeah. But that's a very nice thing for the parents.
Yeah.
HDMI two.
Yeah, it helps to pull them in.
Yes.
HDMI two.
Yeah.
Because we rely on volunteers all the time.
When our kids were those ages, our whole social book was, I think it was done by, what's, what's they give?
Send it around there.
Were and religious ed classes and.
Come on, come on.
And that was our life.
Mm-hmm.
Not even as much, I, one thing I regret that I didn't do as much in a PT.
PTA. PTA, yeah.
As I, I wished I had done, but.
Nothing.
But I did.
Sense me even on microwave at home.
And I had, I was invited to be on the nursing service, the public health nursing service board.
Mm-hmm.
So I joined and then I was pregnant again. Like my kids had allergy, asthma problems when they were little, so I had an extra load all the time when they were little. And I just thought I couldn't do it at the time. So when I had a fourth child, my husband said, is there something you feel like you're missing how long? And I said, yes, I would really like to be on the board. And so he said, well, I'll make sure I'll help you. And it's like, first it's to get to a monthly meeting, but you know, when you're on board and there's a committee, then the committee, even your general committee with Simon has got.
It's one meeting a month and then it goes up.
Not once. But anyway, I went all the way through. I walked up to two of them for a couple of years and that was with the starting four children.
Okay, so we're supposed to put HDMI two.
Okay.
Good morning. Now I can't.
Good morning. You're gonna want this back in the place I think that it was.
We are for it. It was so.
I can't.
My focus was on Ross that.
Nah, she's my second.
I forgot the video though. That's a little.
Yeah.
First, your thought.
Yeah. That's it, she's good.
Is she going to five?
So Regina, I think.
Going on. Five, right there.
You know what it is.
I got weird. We just showed you the way to do it. It's not there. It was sent to the door. I can't really have to change this.
Yeah, but it's been all, you know, I don't even know when that thing was.
Gina, we have to put over here HDMI two on the TV, but I can't get there.
Maybe you're. Say we're like. In the mall, he's gonna do this. I'll take side.
I do the touch. I just.
I think people do that now.
I trade.
Yes. I can't, I could not.
Even when I'm.
Right there.
Put it in the mall.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't know if you can do that.
I remember taking my bicycle and going all over classroom.
Yes.
There we are. I just need a sign.
I don't know if my kids can get pretty young.
That was one. Lord knows if that's going to look like.
Right.
Got it to. I don't even know. We had it all lined up so that it. It was probably forget.
My.
It is 360, so, but like I say, I'm not quite sure where it. We should have marked it on the floor before people moved it.
Yeah. I don't know.
I know.
Oh, it is easy, yeah.
Yeah, it's very easy to start it.
Yeah.
Oh.
But it'll catch something, you know, because it is 360, so.
Cold times. Now I understand why I couldn't get this thing.
I'm gonna draw this way, like.
There's a lot.
Actually, it's pretty easy. What we're doing today is the TV wasn't even on, but it's still a TV. Somebody was. And that's. Yeah.
There's just a lot of different groups of people that are.
Yeah.
Using it.
Yeah. Good, now set. Do you know if anyone has this?
That's used to.
From, is any over? What's that, I'm calling you.
Most people don't keep them and don't leave them and then we have to tell you whether or not we approve them, you know? How are you doing fine in yourself? Martha, this is for you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Ben.
You're welcome.
Oh, wow. Enjoy your meeting.
Thanks.
Ooh, that's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. When do you start out? What's that? Uh, April, the last weekend of April is when we start the little kids, so April, what's that, 30th, something like that, 2930 tomorrow night. Uh, practices start mid-April, so right after spring break is when we usually start.
Things will dry.
Yeah, the spring is always difficult because snow, you know. It's hard to get away till it dries out and.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe down our driveway is a.
Tell you that. But. We'll get permission from the park electric.
It's four of them.
We have enough for, you have.
We have four. We have four.
We need to. We appoint her as a. And she included in the board as well. To get the.
Actually, they wouldn't, they didn't move it up, her status.
Okay, so do we need to appoint her?
Yeah, I think, don't we?
To include her in the.
Yeah.
Allow the voting, yes. I think that was the order, sorry, so we start.
I've been talking about you, my appointment, yes. And I don't know if I told you that I had that phone call from Jeff Cool. Somewhere, he's a member of the Democratic National, Town Committee.
Okay.
So the power's on.
What's this? They were reviewing. The appointment. And he said, and you're a Democrat. And I said, no, I'm not. No, I didn't have that.
I remember there was something on here too that needed turn. It says it's on mute right now.
That I will not be supporting your.
Oh, yeah, you gotta press.
Because you are.
Press the button again.
If I put.
Talking now.
Understanding.
I'm getting the talking.
What?
Yeah, it was working before. But you have to view, not the video, but the audio wasn't working. I just said it's unmuted.
So I did like chat, like I called my Ben, I asked him, and I chatted.
Okay. Oh, there. What did you do?
Uh, you had to hit the video.
Okay, nearly had rotten and, you know, like, try this phone friendly chat like we are, get along, we walk together. He called me that three times and that phone fun.
Wow.
I don't know how this is. Your appointment.
So you have.
So I called John, we started, and he said he was straight in the light with lost him. And I left it and didn't call up and we do that or not or whatever, I don't know. But he was very surprised.
I can imagine.
He said that he knows this man and he was surprised that it happened and he's surprised that it's him.
Yeah, I think in, in general, they try to.
They don't.
Have, you know, about equal.
I've always considered our committee non.
Well.
I mean. The day they vote, that's mine, you know.
It's the same thing with, with my historic commission. There's no politics. Doesn't enter into any, really, but that's how, that's how they do it. I guess if they didn't do, try to do it kind of that way, somebody would have an issue with it, you know, it'll always be someone, always be.
But, but I don't know what the balance is. I mean, I'm not, maybe you guys give each other a Republican or another Republican or how is it?
He said what you were, I had no clue and I don't care. I don't care.
Well, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I know, that I get.
It's hard to find. Volunteer.
No.
Got the kind and the energy wheel, the, you know.
Just looking to see if there's something else on here that controls the active camera.
You wouldn't wanna block somebody out if you really set it.
It should be fine.
You know.
Lights are on.
There it is. The lights. What did you do?
Nothing. I sat it back down on this.
Maybe it was loose.
It could have been loose.
Okay, he says.
Because the lights, if these lights are on.
Corey just did a chat and said he can't hear, it's low.
We called the lawyer.
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Um.
So if anyone else on.
Everybody. What, my name's not.
That is the volume.
But there might be people online.
Oh, one is me because I started the meeting.
Oh.
And then you said Corey.
Is it Corey Lawford?
Oh, Corey, okay, that's two.
Yeah, he's just a member of the public.
He should not be up there.
No, we won't be up there. I just don't know if we need to account for who's, if anyone's listening.
Anyone, anyone can.
Oh, anybody can.
Yeah. It's open, open.
Yeah, open mic. Okay, and we have pointed. And you're my alternative.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Here. They do that, just candidly. Yeah. And we need to know. What's wrong with them? Is there anything wrong?
Oh, is there?
It's a great mic.
I didn't.
Should it be? Should it be? I didn't see anything. I didn't see anything.
It shouldn't be.
All right.
Okay.
I move with the.
We have the volume up as high as it'll go.
Home favor.
Yeah, it is. Up as high as it can go.
Okay. Fiscal report. You know what my math is like, so. We have a budget of $2,000. Um, the cost of the flag, and they made it, they bought. They bought, the flag are in, they bought $756.
Adjust it and put tape down.
What we did was get.
I think it needed just to be received.
We bought five boxes of flags, and 144 flags. Costing 151.20 thousand.
For lots.
Very much.
So each box has 144 and you bought five?
Yes.
Yeah.
As they will be passed out next meeting. As they will be passed out next meeting. Now that leaves us with a nice chunk of money. It leaves us with one thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars. In our account. So we can start thinking about things we need. Or want.
I think these, these flags are not the ones we.
That last.
Last, last time, the ones that we put out last time, the price doubled.
So we said, no, we don't.
So we.
So tell me the.
You know, you went to, uh.
There's a question about the sleeve.
No, there is no sleeve anymore.
Okay.
Because that was what was costing us an almost double.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
The price. Not only has a sleeve, it has a clip that held the piece at the top.
Wow.
And I found it in the woods, so I don't know.
And it probably wasn't nice, it might have been.
No, it was impressive, yeah. Yeah, yeah. But that's an expensive flag.
Yeah.
Okay, so how are our flag the tabs to the state?
They tabled, okay. Yeah, yeah, how would, how would they behave them?
Please, get the ones with the sleeves.
Yeah.
You put out what, like, seven hundred or something, something like that, is what we.
Yeah. Actually, by giving you the fiscal report, I've given you my committee report. Anything in that, that, a doctor, Mr. Goodehouse? Doctor, yeah.
Yeah, situations. Get an extra pass. But, uh, situation, city, what you're saying, we've got two cemeteries that are lacking. Main, main town. Reservation. The main, yeah.
Oh, no, that's putting the flags up, okay?
Yeah, no, no, the doctors are maintaining.
Maintaining it, okay.
It, it, uh, though, nothing was done this year to maintain it. It's a bit overgrown, it's, it's not too bad, but we've got to find somebody for that, and I'm, I'm hoping with, uh, the new, the new members, that maybe, maybe, maybe somebody would step up and, uh, take on that one. If not, we're just gonna have to do it, because we can't let it go.
No, no.
More than a year, year, you know, two years.
But, yeah, by the end of the second year, it's overgrown so badly that, you know, the troshes.
And the other one is the, uh. It's a Styes, Scotter, Timber, the one in, in the park.
Yeah.
Scotter Park. That one, Jay was maintaining that one. He lives in Hartford now, so, he, he had to drop off, but that, that's the other.
The name is not.
Pretty easy, unless it's not that, it's not a very big cemetery. For years, we.
No, he's just giving his report, I, I don't think he, they need to be listed, okay?
Oh, that's, that's, that's it.
Can I, can I ask a question again about volunteers, okay? Do the kids at the high school, does it have any community services or something at the school? I don't know. Does the honor society pick up stuff like this, or athletic teams, or softball teams, that they might? Get back to the town by one cemetery like the VFW did, or like individuals? Could someone, is it possible that someone from the reservation would do that one, not officially, as a, I mean, as a kid, a sixteen-year-old, as a volunteer?
Normally, boy scouts.
Disaster.
Four.
Not the flags, but.
Yeah, we're talking about something different. Right, right, right.
You had a boy scout disasters with maintenance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, what, they didn't show up?
Yeah, they will clean, they will not maintain.
Yeah, the boy scouts won't take on a long time.
Their project, okay.
You know, and seriously, an eagle project.
But they, in the high school, we have a grandson in the high school sophomore. They have to do a project of some sort, don't they, that involves?
Yeah, projects, but I think it's the same thing, boy scouts and schools.
They maintain, they, they will clean, but they will not maintain.
Well, they, they, they can't sign up.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they graduate, now who's gonna do it?
Yeah.
And the boy scouts, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
Well, the one who's doing it needs to take it from a year behind, change it.
Boy scouts have been terrific. You know, when we had, uh, some of these cemeteries have not been, uh, maintained for fifty years.
Yeah.
So you know what that looked like.
Yeah.
But they, the boy scouts would go in and.
Really do it.
Clean it, do the job, which is a big, big job, maybe, maybe repair the gate, you know, or put up a sign for the cemetery. They always, they always did a really, really.
Really nice job, yeah.
The main doesn't need that, the interesting thing about the main is that on the, the map in the book. The entrance is at the part of the cemetery that is toward the road. And that is not where you enter now, you go around behind the fire station, we have our own little driveway that makes the reservation.
Right, right.
And parking lot, and there's steps.
Yes, they put up, yeah.
And the entrance is there.
Yeah.
It just doesn't show that in the, in the book.
I'm not rewriting that whole book, just reading.
I give, give.
But it doesn't need, you know, it's, it's very clear.
They sign each other and everything, they're good.
I give, I give the tribe credit, because they, to put that parking lot in, and the driveway.
Yes.
It's often some bucks. Back, I guess, when they were flush.
They did it.
You know, they had.
They, they're crying now, we don't have any money.
They did it, but now they won't even maintain it. I mean, their story was, the party financially.
They told me, one time I was there, they were men working on the other side of the stone wall, so on the F. And they told me that a family came. To that cemetery, and. So about three years ago, or more.
Wow.
And the, a family came. But they, they weren't sure, you know, looking at the graves and the names, they weren't sure.
I went into the chief one day, after we had cleaned up and had worked on the cemetery, we were packing up, you know, we went, and we said. How much do you pay to get this done? I said, nothing. I said, they're all volunteers, and he said, well, how do you get them? And I said, we just want. And he just looked at me like I was from outer space.
You should have signed to him, I said, please, you know, would you volunteer, let's put him on the spot, this guy.
He obviously was having problems getting people to do it, because I couldn't believe the conversation I was having, you know, I mean. How do you get people to volunteer, yes, all they can do is say no. And then you're in no different place than you were when you started, you know, I mean.
But I do think it's volunteers everywhere has changed since.
Pandemic?
No.
Oh, oh, our kids.
Our kids were in elementary school, more and more, two families, the parents, both parents are working, that impacted tremendously. Being dramaturgic, it's just, people are working hard, yeah.
All right, old business, the sign that the Lester Cemetery has been replaced, is it up? Everything is fine. The Robert Stoddard Cemetery needs some help, so we need to get, I think, a group together there to get in there again and, and work on it. Now, is this at Stoddard Wolf Park, that place? No. Stoddard Wolf Park is another one, okay?
And it's not the big cemetery on two fourteen?
The Ra, the Robert Stoddard, it's across, across Route twelve from the school, from, uh, Philly at Long School.
Oh, across Route twelve, okay.
That's right, it overlooks the river, I mean, it's.
I've never been, I have to look it up.
I think, what, what it needs, some stones are down, or?
I don't know, just, here it says Robert Stoddard needs help, I know we did work on it.
Yeah, so, one second.
That agenda.
The last meeting?
That agenda.
Oh, oh.
Yes, yes, that's why, I remember writing one of that, this is the one that was attached with it, it was new, the, the attached with the, what is it called?
This is the minute, the twelve, for the October thing, is that what you've got there, the minute?
I have the minutes, and then this was in front of it, the agenda. That's what, you said the wrong, sent there, I went over, I said, I don't have Lester right there.
No, no, I think I've got the right one.
Okay.
I think this is, yeah, because the next one is new committee member needed.
That was, uh.
For the better.
That was the last one.
But, yeah, probably plus was our last meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the minutes of the last meeting say, three of the members must be gathered, like, five members and two alternatives. Mrs. Reynolds and Mr. Krueger are interested in transitioning from all of the members, and that's the thing that should have happened, did not, did not happen.
Yeah, all I, when I asked about it, all I got was, um, too late. Which I didn't think was very bad.
Not very important, but, no.
Too late. I, I, all these, I think, be the same.
We have not moved on to old business yet, right?
We just went there.
We've not moved to new business, we're on old business. Okay, so in the notes for old business, it says, um, from the previous meeting, about the Christopher Avery Cemetery, the problem we had with the poison ivy, and, uh. Well, we discussed the green briar and the wasp nest. Took the flag out, and it was in the flag, and wasp nest was in the flag.
Wait, have we had to add a discussion about the Rogue Cemetery?
No, that's what I'm saying, that's, that's on this agenda.
That's.
That's on this agenda.
Yeah.
That's why I said, you, you said something from the previous one, that's why I'm on.
Oh.
Well, I'm still thinking, we're still on old business, from this agenda, number four, says any other old business before the committee.
Right. That's where I was going with.
Where's today? I thought this is the.
This is the agenda that.
William Williams, Rogue Cemetery, all right, wait. William Williams, okay. I am so confused.
This has to do with putting.
Okay, yeah. William Williams, Connecticut Red Sandstone, number two.
Yeah, right.
The older cemetery in Leger.
That was new business last week, now it becomes old business.
This week.
Which is what is on this agenda right here, it's on the old business.
That's.
I have this in the agenda.
But William Williams, the marker. We don't have any other information.
It looks familiar, but I don't know why I can't find it. We were eight twenty-two, this is today.
Yep, there you go, there you go. If you flip over, you'll see this. Yes.
William Williams. Okay, now, we're back to old business, William Williams, repair of inscription. They are not getting in the metal that they should be getting into within that store. And.
Oh, supply.
Yeah, supply, so we're gonna have to just kind of print and bear it for a while and hope. That we don't get some terrible storm that takes away those little piles of Connecticut red sandstone.
Do you have some rephotos?
No.
Maybe that's something you could do for, not to post them anywhere, but for the committee.
Yeah, yeah, it's probably something we should, it should be something we should just, we can discuss, um, you know, after the flags are written.
The, uh, the problem there. The charioteering sandstone.
Yeah.
There, it's a problem throughout, I mean, all these cemeteries.
Right, they are, I know, I see stuff that was there, that's even broken, when you go there, not there, and.
Yeah.
The idea, I think, your, because your idea, when they were over there, to get some kind of a.
Marker.
A marker.
It has the, we have what was on the stone originally, I mean, that comes out of the, several books, you know? And then, uh, I, at, at least we know, you know, John is here, and his wife, Mad Martha is there, and, you know, so on down the line. But we can't get the, I don't want to get something that's gonna disintegrate in a month.
So what is it, the, the square ones that go flat that hold up the best, what kind of marker?
Well, we, this is an experiment, because we don't have a marker that indicates what's going on. Ben and I kind of, after we left, there were a, some, a meeting here, we drove by and went, wait a minute, that's why, that sign. Is metal, and it, 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 and it's lasted, we, we bought the signs years ago. So the idea was, we'll go talk to Tony, and we will straighten all this out, and we will get, but he can't get the metal.
I heard you say that.
Cannot get the metal, so we're.
Supply chain issue.
Right, big time, big time. The last thing I read about it was pages with cat food.
The other, uh, we have these on some of the cemeteries, and they do ones the boy scouts took care of, but they took from the book. They had a stand.
Let me know.
Last, the upright.
Being stored.
And the inscriptions, and the, the map of the cemetery, and the inscriptions from that book are in that.
Yeah.
So, so.
We know they're gonna last, you know, but when we get them.
But if somebody is looking for a stone. You know, and they can't read it. That information from the book tells you.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
Tells you where the stone is.
Yeah.
And it tells you what was on it, that one, you know, whatever's. So, I mean, that, that, that's a, a way to do it, it's not. It's not as, you know, it's not as convenient as having something right, right, right by the stone that you, that you can read, but.
Right.
It's not a bad, it's, to me, it's not a bad, you know, way that we could go.
What I just said to Rusty is this book on CD, now that to me, like, that's not so technical, it's not like a map. Um, well, a project, but the someone who has technical ability or and means the right equipment or whatever, I would go by, I don't, I don't know. But that would be another way to have a.
Right, the research room has taken a copy of that, actually, two or three copies of that book. And they were supposed to.
Drayman?
Yeah, they were supposed to do something with it, and it never happened.
But I'm thinking about, you know, we don't have the really hard, the April project. I mean, another, just to briefly now, we talked about April project, which we put up this information in appropriate stands. And, and do three, four cemeteries that could make a project out.
And then, this, this book that I have has in my own, like, once given these directions, sometimes that this, this spot is crossed out, and this thing's crossed out.
Yeah, but you learn.
Well, if you have it on CD.
Yeah.
As we learn those things.
See, that, and that kind of project, it's what they're looking for, they want something that is useful to the public. They would like to have some, something that you have to make. Okay, design it. So it's got all the yellow. But anyway, just, just.
Your CD online.
It's, it's, but they, I know that they have done a hell of a lot of photographs, and they are online.
Who's the, the?
The research room. Was it, yeah, okay. Now, Rogue Cemetery. That is eight grand that Mr. here is supposed to be doing, however, you can only use the trust to the letter. And it doesn't read right. So we cannot put, we cannot take the eight grand and put it into walls. So what does it, Ben and I, we argue, we're walking back and forth, because it's a cemetery within a cemetery.
This is the last approach.
Yes, yep, you have that right.
You're looking for ways to interpret.
Yeah, and there was no one.
That did it, but.
No interpreting it.
Couldn't figure out a way, it, it specifically says the money is for use for maintaining the graves that are inside of a.
Inside the inside.
In, inside the inside, okay, there's the stones that mark where, where most of the graves are.
Technicality.
And that's, you know, inside of the stone wall, but specifically, so. So.
So we have to, you know, you cannot use those trusts without reading them carefully and making sure, and going, you have to go in to see exactly what they were talking about at the time they are in the trust. It doesn't match, you know.
Well, those stones weren't a bad.
No, the stones are not a bad choice.
I mean, you could say, say a stone needed professional
Help.
Help to restore it, or something like that. You can do that, but the stones are, are in good shape right now, so.
And like I said, that cemetery is a cemetery inside a cemetery. You've got the outside, and you've got that little thing down the middle, and it's a little thing down the middle.
Too bad, because it's a, it's a good.
Well, that's the one that has the money, the little strip down the middle is what has the money.
Ten, ten thousand, you know.
Okay, Christopher Avery. Poison Ivy, has that been taken care of?
No, no. Not, not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Yeah, the the gentleman that maintains it, who lives.
He's still around, I don't know his name.
His name, his, his first name is Jason. And he's, he's been maintaining it. He fell behind this year, he said, because he was away or something, but he still wants to maintain it. He, I think, he must not be, you know, some people don't get twice an Ivy.
Yeah, some.
Yeah, but some people get it real bad, and really easy, you know, it just depends on your makeup, I guess. But he's, he's been weed whacking that. And weed whacking the poison ivy, you know, which spreads it around, and I guess he, either he covers himself up when he goes, goes in there with. But I was gonna a- ask him about it.
Well, this, for the last time, first of all, right at the graves where we're trying to fix the medallion and put the flag in, okay? There's poison ivy, now those two in the front, those two graves.
Yeah, yeah.
There is also green briar, right around.
Oh, yeah.
Around the flagpole over the grave.
Isn't that, are they blueberries?
They're not blueberry, no, this is green, it's a vine that comes up and it's got thorns on it.
Oh, yeah, I know.
That's the, the, yeah, Babary. It's, it's an invasive.
Berry.
Yeah, it's.
Hands, the last time, one of the flags, the flag was, I was cutting with a hand, cutting the green briar. And the flag was folded over, you know, the way the wind, not creased, but it was rolled around, and then Erica, the friend who goes with me, said, watch it, there's, there's wasps or bees, and right then I got the buzz, I didn't get stung, but I got the buzz, and I'm looking at it. And the way the flag was folded over was attached by the wasp nest, oh, using the flag to, you know, it was like this, and the wasp nest was in there.
Oh, wow, come on, I mess with.
There, there are certain times in the year when you, you don't go into a cemetery that you aren't aware of. We had one, uh, a slightly over. The, the, the gear cemetery.
Yes, yeah, yes, yeah.
And, boy, they were, they were underground, they were on the trees, they were, you know, so we looked at them and said, bye.
Stings on it.
It's only so much of my life I'm gonna give to the cemetery committee.
You don't really have to worry much about the bees until you get into.
September?
Well, August.
August.
Bees, bees are one, bees were not bees.
The early, early spring is not, is not a problem, they're just.
Well, we had been in early spring, and we were suggesting we go in the summer, and we went to a cemetery in the summer, but when we did not go back there.
Yeah.
Because of the, but if, if this person, you said, they, Jake, wants to continue doing it. I mean, I'd be happy to.
Turn it over, kill it.
Well, I could say, you know, we're gonna go and visit, do you wanna wolf up there with us?
Right.
Oh, that, yeah, if you give me the contact.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe it would be encouraging, he'd know somebody else cares about it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay, we have the new business?
Yeah, there's no other news, no other old.
Old business before I'm coming before this committee, not that I know of. All right. We have, you see, two new members who are committed. One of them is a Kim. Kimlin?
Kimlin.
Kimlin Marshall, the other one is, this is, you're gonna love this, this town is going into the toilet. Mr. Jessica, Jessica.
Bailey. J E S S I B.
Jessica.
Jessica.
But her title, they, it came in as Mr.
Okay, and the last name?
S T A L E Y, Staley. Now, I have not heard from Jessica at all. I have heard from Haley.
Kimlin?
Kim, Kimlin, K I M L I N, L Y A. Um, she wrote, sent me a le, a note that says, I am very excited to be on this committee. I work for seat transport transit, Monday through Friday, seven thirty to three thirty.
That might be amazing.
I have no scheduled breaks during this time, which I thought was illegal, but then neither here nor there. I love that the meetings are nine o'clock in the morning, since by six o'clock I am exhausted, I don't suppose in any way meetings can be put at four o'clock. So I guess that she's coming off work, we would be having a meeting, or Saturdays at nine AM.
I agree.
I, I got you, don't.
Doesn't work.
No, doesn't work for me. She then says, I truly apologize, and if an alternate time cannot be worked out, I will resign, so you can find a placement ASAP. If sadly this happens, my husband and I would love to be volunteers to help in any way. I have, she, she's very considerate, I have not been sworn in just in case. Because once you're sworn in, you're.
Well, they want help.
Obviously, they want.
I think, I think these two will help, whether they get it or not. Is it impossible to think of a four o'clock? What's desirable, I don't know.
I mean, you're, you're working, would that be better for you, or does it?
That's fine, either way, I mean, I go in in the morning and I leave, I come here and then I go back, so it doesn't bother me one bit. Four o'clock makes it a little easier, because then I don't have to.
Go back, right, 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 okay.
So maybe that's, that's a.
I just would stay away from.
I don't have a problem with it, and Ben doesn't have a problem with it.
I don't think, what do you, that's four, it's not a, a bad, you know, weekday at four.
It's okay, I like the morning better, but.
Oh, yeah, that's just right, you know. I'd like to keep that morning open, so that if, you know, if something happens and, and she disappears, you know.
Yeah.
We can very quickly go back to what we've been doing, because this early morning thing is good.
But this is the issue of volunteers and working people.
Exactly, 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 and I, I like the fact that she was polite enough.
Yeah, sounds like she's.
Yeah, and, and, you know, she's obviously enthusiastic about doing something, because.
And still willing to help, even if she's beyond the committee, she's still willing to.
That's what she said.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will contact her and tell her her engagement before.
I don't know, he knows about it. He knows about it, but.
I will then let everybody know whether we've gone permanently four o'clock. Yeah.
So I, I think, I think if we change before we have to. Don't have it.
Okay, so we might have to.
And it's probably a notification period, and all that kind of stuff.
We already have our meeting on the calendar this year, so if we're gonna change this year, so you have to vote on it.
Right, well, they caused the problem, I'm sorry. They're gonna have to do a little bit of extra work. I'd like them to get, somebody to take those people that are doing all this stuff and.
Is she lighter, huh? Is she a veteran?
Yes, I think she's the best one, I don't know, I don't know.
I'll be good to you.
Yeah, well, then, then the person who has had no contact with you would be the best, I mean, one of the two has been the best.
But they, they were on distribution, Chris, maybe. I, I know she couldn't make it, she's taking awful work, but the other person. Yeah, we didn't hear anything.
Nothing, I've heard nothing. They're telling people that something, oh, something is on the computer, I mean, it's just. It doesn't happen, I mean, I, I check that computer maybe once a week. They designed it all a lot.
So what do we tell her?
Um, the, the, the committee, is the committee agreed? And we were taking it and putting it in official hands, or something.
The one you didn't hear anything from?
Which one are you talking, this one? The one where I, we have to change it, I, huh?
We have to change it.
Yeah, that has to be officially done.
I'm ready.
I think the, the clerk town clerk there, she keeps all the, the schedules and so forth, so I think we would have to vote, vote on it, and then you submit to her your revised schedule, which is, which is the same except for the time.
Yeah.
Unless, unless you wanna change the day.
No.
The day is hard, right, it's a good day.
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of the old schedule, just changing the, the time.
Yeah.
We just have to do that.
And it's too immediate, right? We have one, two, three, you have.
April?
April, June, and, and October.
Okay, so this is just our first meeting of this, of twenty-two.
Why are we changing it? Does anybody wanna add a meeting to this, or we, do we think we've covered everything in regular meetings, or?
Like, the things we do, it's, it's a good time, right now, we're getting ready to fill the flag, the next meeting. We get the flags, we're situated, it's all done. Especially where our next one is April, and we have our June meeting.
Yeah, what have you done and what needs to be done.
And then we're on ours, because that's where we do our maintenance, over the summer, not.
Right.
And then October, we wrap it up with.
With, yeah.
But I don't know if there's another one needed or not, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's a, I think it's a good schedule for now, unless someone really has a.
An urge to be.
Another.
No.
Can I go back to the, the new member who is a service person, a veteran?
The one I think might be the veteran, said.
The one, Jessica, the one, no, the one, oh, yeah, that you did not hear.
Yeah, did not hear from, okay.
So, someone gave you that name?
Oh. Yeah.
Letter of appointment, right?
Right, right, and this, this comes from Kevin Dobrowski, who is chairman of the council.
Yeah.
So you have the choice, you can contact.
We need both of them.
All right, so we worked with Kim, now I'm talking about Mr. Jessica.
Right, isn't that ridiculous?
So you can either contact that person, Jessica, and say, please confirm your interest in this appointment, or we cannot progress, because you don't wanna put that name to Jeff Cool, so whoever is supposed to, you know, the committees, if the person is not interested.
Yeah.
Well, this is, this has come down through the committee.
Okay, so then you go back to Kevin Dobrowski and say, this person did not respond yet. To confirm or withdraw or something like that, don't just leave it like.
Oh, no, no, no.
We never followed up on it.
Did?
I thought she might show up today, yeah, yeah.
The two of them are members. The council has appointed these two to this committee. They have not been, they didn't go to get sworn in, but.
One didn't, we only know about Kim.
You also know that they didn't appoint me a regular member, so there's.
Right.
There's some thing going on.
Right. Yeah.
Well, there might be a story why that person isn't here, but I don't know if they, do they even know whose contact, or. I don't think.
Will aid you in preparation for the cemetery committee meetings by providing materials and supporting documentation, daily correspondence, and other reference information, they. All they have to do is.
But they, they, they were, uh, they weren't sent the agendas and the, the minutes, they were on the list, right?
They're in, uh, they're in the computer.
They're in the computer, so they, they were, they were sent the agendas, the agenda and the minutes.
Go over the timeline, look it up.
So they could, they, yeah. I don't, I don't really care for the, the way, the way the town does, because people, um, they don't get us, the committees into the loop, they're new people. They get applications. People, some, some people have an idea where they wanna go, and they'll say, or some people say, "I wanna volunteer," and don't specify, so they pick something, uh, but we don't, we don't.
So, but, I mean, as an alternate, I received this phone call from Jeff Coolos, now that was very welcoming if I was a Democrat. That was very affirming, "We want you," and welcome, and yada, yada, yada. So did those people receive a phone call from somebody?
I have no idea. We, we had heard, Ben and I had heard kind of lots of this information.
Yeah.
In the beginning, there was nothing that was definite, nothing, and then, you know, I asked the two guys, the, you know, brought up a, a notch, and, and I started, I got my, the answer to that was, uh, "To work, you're, you're too late."
To ask for those two members?
No, 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 to ask for you guys to move up, I don't know. So.
Yeah, try to.
These guys are, are, when they write in the, in the, um, in the listing in the, on the computer, it's Ben, me, and then these two girls. And then it goes to you and Paul.
But they have.
They ride over you.
She wanted to make you and Paul regular members.
Yeah.
And then these new people would come in and offer.
Right.
And so.
But maybe they'll make them the regular members, that they won't need an alternate anymore.
So you would, you, you initiate.
Yeah, you wanted, yeah.
So Roxanne takes, does that, you tell her, so she puts the paperwork in, and it goes to the administration committee, that's the first stop. And apparently, they, they had already approved these people at that time, but the council had not. So they had an opportunity, uh, well, let's back up on this, review it.
Right.
But they.
They didn't, they didn't.
Roxanne said Andrea, who heads that, didn't wanna do that. She wouldn't, she wouldn't stop the process to start over again, for whatever reason. So these folks got approved as regular members, okay? Yeah, and, and.
Something, I, I.
The whole system is, and, and it's, and it's all, it's secretive.
But if, 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 if they just got us involved early on, I think we could avoid a lot of issues.
Who's the other alternate besides me? Paul?
Well. So I'm not sure what. You spelled it out, but I, what do we wanna do with this four o'clock deal?
Oh, um, well, you're just, you're gonna, I have done it, you're gonna just talk to Kimlin, right?
Right.
And just verify that she's. We, that we are discussing where, we don't have an issue of doing that.
Right.
But I also think you need to try and get with, um.
Roxanne?
Yeah, Jessica.
Oh, Jessica, yes.
To let her know that the meetings will potentially are going to be moved before, let's see if that's.
Right.
Maybe, maybe it's more appealing to her at that point.
Yeah.
Um, and then the, the next meeting, we'll have to just stamp it, say, "We're good."
Right, but I think it also has to start going through Roxanne.
Yes, to see if the, even if this is available, if we've got her here.
Well. Sorry. If it's, if it's not this room, it'd be the library, I would go back to the library, I mean, it's, this stuff. Think that.
Is they were grown in the library, or is it up in that big room?
Right, big room.
I mean, not that we're supposed to print it, but it's just, you know.
Well, it's just a big, hey. So we just got out.
And I never had, I mean, people don't get up at nine o'clock, you know, so we never had a problem with this. I thought we were going to initiate it. Okay. I've had this control, I hope, I hope, I hope.
The new business got location and time?
Yeah, that's where we are. Because the new members needed a change in time, and hopefully not location. All right. Um. The, I'm, I'm only gonna tell you this because it's on the calendar. We had several people who don't have, put flags. They. We have a board, we went flag to each grave, each grave, and two flags are showing up.
I've seen people.
Uh-huh.
You arrive there to replace a flag if there's two flags on it.
Or you've got here. Wow.
I know, it's on my side.
It is, okay, all right. My son Matthew was fascinated with this. This is something he can understand. There's a big family tombstone.
Yeah.
Okay, and it's got a flag. And it has a metal marker. And about six feet behind it, it's another stone, only it's flat. Not, not necessarily, but.
Military flag.
Military flag.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's fine.
So somebody puts a flag in that, but it's connected to the cemetery, to the grave in front. So only one flag.
Right, where should it go?
It should go in the marker, in the big flag.
Yeah, because we wanna keep her.
Right, right, so they can mow it, they can do all that good stuff.
I mean, these are flat, so they can mow, and then we put a flag there, and that, and that'll, you know, it's just up to maintenance, so.
It's, uh, the, our big cemetery has a worse problem with. Our, yeah. So, all right, so everybody understands now how to put a flag in.
At the headstone.
At the headstone, right.
Headstone.
You're gonna have to.
That's why they're headstones.
You're gonna have to give these out to the new people, the rest of the people that make the.
Remember, Matt, what did Matthew want to do? Want to digitize them or something?
He wanted what?
Digitize them? Does that sound like a word he would use?
My kid, yeah.
Digitize what?
Yeah, yeah.
He wants to put it, make it so that it's something you can read on a computer, it's not your handwriting, it's typed. And, and can be.
I, I said I have enough on the members of the committee, it's gonna, it's gonna go mad.
Well, I think she made it, they say a picture's worth a thousand words, no.
Take a picture.
A picture, a picture.
Put the picture of this on.
She, she thought a picture might, might help, that was people.
I think the picture's a good idea, just take a picture of this, and that'll go on line.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, I knew you guys were okay, I, I do know who the guilty party is, so, well, we'll take care of that. Um, any other new business come before the committee? No, a, uh.
Want me to motion to adjourn?
Yeah, that would be wonderful.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I love.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, April, the next, next meeting?
Yeah, April twelfth is our next meeting.
I mean, I don't know at the moment what time it is, but you will know about it. It's a nine o'clock?
Yeah, well, we voted for two, or four, so we're, we're gonna assume it's gonna be four, okay? We voted on that, right?
Uh, no, we did not. They didn't actually officially vote it, because we were going to discuss with Kim, and then we gotta find out about just.
See if they're okay with the question.
That's why I think the next one's.
I know Kim will be, because it was her, right?
The other we don't, no, so we need to check with her.
So that's all up in here.
So they got a minimum, the next one has to be at nine, and then the rest.
And then we can check with whatever.
Or availability as well.
We can officially make it that, at the next, at the next meeting.
Yeah.
So the next meeting will be at nine?
I think that should still be around.
I'll probably call you up.
So she won't be able to come to the next meeting?
Who, Kim, yeah.
Kim, for sure. The bus driver.
Is that what her job, I didn't see?
Seats.
Yeah, but I didn't get it, that she was the driver, I thought she, you know, there's all kinds of offices and.
I think it's terrible that she, she has eight hours of straight driving.
Well, not everybody has a job to pick, have a little bit of flexibility, right? I mean, some, some jobs you just can't, there's a, there's a reason why, why you have to be there, you know?
I, I've got, but I thought that was illegal, I really did, I think that's.
But I like, I like, she's gonna, she's gonna track her husband into it, just like you did the same thing.
Well, according to Roxanne, she grabbed it, and bring, bring it to some of these. He mothers that part, they're gonna get to see.
I know he was there, being putting out flags, oh, show him that picture.
This picture?
Yeah, and he's gonna do it again.
Okay.
So where are we going? This is all, yeah, we're done the meeting, right?
Yes, yeah.
Why is this issue with the medallion, where the round thing on the back is broken? And you told me it was no good, like we just discovered. So I told my husband, "This is so much, take the other piece off and we'll use it as a, like a tribute on the table." And my husband said that would be disrespect, disrespectful, and it didn't belong to me, and yada, yada, yada. And so I still have it in a drawer somewhere for my kids to attend to when I'm.
Thanks, guys.
Well, have a good day, but Sonny, you're gonna be close.
Yeah, that's what I needed for.
And Warner, thank goodness, we have created it, just one thing, do you know that there was a bad accident?
Yes, there's, when I came in, I had, I still got a text saying, it was still, roads were so closed, so.
That's where I live, and.
Oh, down that way, yeah.
And the, the police told my husband that it was a head-on collision, there was a fire.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, yeah, it was a major accident.
That means that the other one is crying, and just, you know. And they expect to be there.
Mostly today.
We have our own truck at our driveway.
They pay the work for the Department of Assessment and Appeal, they, I think, put a. Exactly, 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 I think.
I don't think they're gonna do it.
We normally, you know, you gotta go up, it only goes one way.
I mean, they, what?
I'm trying to predict. Neighbors can go up there, huh?
The mayor day is the day that her, you know, where our house fits in.
Yep.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're ten houses. And that's six point seven. And you're just going, why am I trying? Please, don't be so recent. Hey, I can see if you put a picture back there, how, or even if it was something like that, in exchange.
My husband does, he wants to have a deed to our property, that he doesn't feel like looking for.
Oh, thank you.
So I'm for a deed, I think we're gonna go on that property.
Yeah, I see that, that, uh, stock, because I'm just starting from the, from the old, the old team, and, and it's, uh, the paper.
State.
Pop went to.
Well, he said that's not good to our property.
I, I, I think we went to Bryant.
No, I think, uh.
No, that's another piece of the puzzle, we're working on, you know, and the boy is.
Pollard, he, he went to Bryant.
I'm not sure, and they finally decided.
And she's had a couple of years, and I.
I saw, I remember the riot, because the reason I, that, that problem was out, because my daughter used to work.
On Shirley Nichols property.
Yeah, they even had a sign.
It's, it's a good, uh, it's a good business.
Shirley owned the property, and that's, but that's definitely does not say residential.
Uh-huh, so now.
Trish liked it, uh, she was in charge of residents' bike door.
I don't think that's why it's turning.
And of all the places she's worked, he said, the kids there were the, had the least problems, they were the most, uh, dedicated, I guess, or whatever, to what they were doing.
Focused on.
And it may, you know, that was, it wasn't, you know, as far as drunken brawls and parties, they were a minimize, minimized with that, that.
Have a good day.
All right.
We outside?
Yeah, we are, yeah, we are, yeah.
Love the town.
Love the town. Look at the town.